Okay, good evening, folks. We called to order our special workshop meeting for May 17th. Number of items on the agenda. So we're gonna have to move quickly in the next sixty minutes.
What we've got here, the first thing we have on here, wastewater treatment plant. Over the last couple of council meetings, we've had our financial advisors come in and let us have access to additional monies to go out and begin the engineering phase or the design phase of our wastewater treatment plant. I wanted to take one step back before we take two steps forward and come back and remind you guys of where we're at on the wastewater treatment plant. I've given you guys in your packet a copy of our permit and the next to last line on that permit is the one I want you to pay attention to. It says that as authorization to discharge, it'll expire at midnight, May 31st, 2020. And that's why we're kind of operating in a fashion and timeframe to meet that that goal of getting a new wastewater treatment plant before the end of that date. With about a year to a year and a half for us to go out and figure out what kind of plant we want, designing that plant, probably a few months in there then for the bidding of it, and then probably a year and a half to two years to construct it. That puts us right on that timeframe for May of about 2020. So that's the timeframe that we're looking at. The next thing on the Y is that in the next page I gave you guys our daily averages coming through that plant. And as of annual 2015, we had about 900,000 gallons that flowed through that facility on a daily basis. We're permitted for a million gallons a day. We have a maximum capacity of permitted for about 1.2. Even though we have a lot of numbers here that we can go through, really the one that I have the issue with is that 900,000 gallons a day. Because any time a plant gets over 75% capacity, I kind of start to worry. Since we're already at 95%, and that's why, again, we want to go out and start looking at this wastewater treatment plant and getting a new one online. The next item I gave you is just the last inspection report that we got from DEQ. And this kind of went through a lot of the things out there. They're showing that we've got cracks here, this, that, and the other. Then finally, one of the things that I want to go that related to the next page was, no, go ahead.
Oh, I got a quick question if you want to move on. So we're permitted for a million gallons?
Yes.
So what does it take to get, and so we're estimated with a new plant to go through, how many?
We haven't figured that out yet. That's part of the engineering phase.
But there won't be an issue getting permitted for that, is all I'm saying.
No, no, we actually have to prove to DEQ essentially what we'll be asking for in capacity forty years from now.
Okay.
So that'd be part of that study that we do to figure out that.
Keeping it to a minimum. We've got fifteen items.
So the design, so the design is looking at a forty to fifty-year life, yes?
The next item from that DEQ and the one that kind of relates to the page before that, even though we're at 90% capacity on our permit, we're over our functional capacity. And there's really nothing out there to show you guys directly on a per number where our functional capacity is. But one of the operations and maintenance items that DEQ pointed out to us is the middle flow equals that basin that we have was full of sludge. The reason it's full of sludge is because we don't have the ability to put it back through our plant and we're going to treat it properly. So that's a functional deficiency is on our wastewater treatment plant. And we have it in writing from DEQ now. I know that I've been saying it to you guys, but now it's actually documented by DEQ. Another reason that we're having difficulty keeping up out there is the flow. We don't have the functional capacity to treat our wastewater out there properly. And it ends up costing the city and GPWA customers more money because now we're going to have to go out to bid and have all that sludge from Luke from Flow Equalization Basin when it wasn't ever designed to be a sludge pond. It was not designed to be a flow equalization basin. So I put a copy of that in there for you.
And we have to do that regardless of building that new plant?
Yes. Yes, you do. And we'd have to have it cleaned out anyway, just because I'm going to make it a flow equalization basin again. But until that point in time, we'll try and figure out if we can keep a process going on how we're doing our sludge and where we're putting it. And so, but that'll be patchwork before we get a new plant. The next item on there is I've given you guys a look at a job description for the city to go through for a superintendent of water distribution and water services. Essentially, I'm creating and recreating the position of the czar of our plants. I've started. We took a tour of Grove's sequencing batch reactor plant a few months ago. And once we got back from that tour, started discussions with Lee at our water treatment plant to see what his temperament was on coming back and running both plants. Our current wastewater treatment plant, I think our lead operator looks like he's going to be retiring in a couple of years. And typically, if you're retiring in a couple of years, you may not necessarily be the best person to go out there and design a new plant because you're already on your way out. So I want to make sure that we have our guys that are in operations with the ability to help in the design and a functional design for them for the next thirty or forty years. So Lee and I came to that agreement, I think, yesterday morning. So as soon as the paperwork goes through, I'll be appointing him essentially our water and wastewater plant supervisor.
Czar.
Czar of the plants. Looking forward to that.
Is that adding an additional position or combining?
No, that's just, I'm, he's essentially, I'm expanding his, his role within the organization. So he's going to be taking on additional responsibilities at the wastewater treatment plant. So instead of spending his time 100% at the water treatment plant, more than likely, it'll be 80% at the wastewater treatment plant and probably even a little bit more when we go through the design portions of the wastewater treatment plant. So, but anyway, we're going to have one guy who's responsible for the plants in and of themselves. I've done that before and have found that to be effective in holding that person responsible for our plants and how they're operating.
That's the best guy?
Next, I've given you guys something that came from 2005, but it's from the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission. It's the best thing to actually go through sequencing batch reactors. And so I don't want to sit in here and talk to you guys about the Latin names of the bugs that are fighting with interaction basin because I don't think that's necessarily going to be beneficial to any of us. But I want you guys to have a basic understanding of what type of facility because we are changing the process over. And I think it's on about the about the third page, it's actually on page number three on chapter one. There's a couple of things that I definitely want you guys to take it, be aware of. Is that, one, it's been a technology that's been around since about the twenties. And they've had all kinds of industrial processes. Then, I don't know, a few decades ago, municipalities started in and started looking at these SBRs. And the reason for that, and the two that I highlighted on my page that you guys can read through later on, is that they have a small footprint. Since we have a few acres out there that we can actually build on, that's a good thing for it. And secondly, is that usually based upon their cost of construction and operation, they seem to be cheaper than it would to go some other different routes. There's not too many routes that ODQ would allow us, and that's one of them they would allow us. So above and beyond that, I don't know what we could get through DEQ anyway, based upon the regulations that they currently have. So if I want to give you guys some information on the basics of SBRs, I've also put in a couple of pictures of Grove and Talikwal. They have those facilities in there. And also put some picture of composting facility, which only a few cities around the state currently have. And I think that's going to be most effective for us. We definitely, we have difficulties right now finding a place for our sludge to go. But once you compost it, there's always a demand for compost. And when we went over to Grove, we asked them, what are they doing with the compost right now? And they're currently giving it away, but they're going, their lead operator was going to take a look at actually going and bagging it and selling it. So that's another thing that we'll be looking at too as we go through this process is not having those additional costs that we're removing sludge and having difficulty finding places to put that sludge. So we'll be looking at a composting facility too, so.
Cost on the SBR versus traditional?
Traditional is probably about, I would say, ten to twenty percent more, depending on what type of traditional process you guys do.
So this is a cheaper scenario?
And it also gives you more varieties of way of treating too.
Flexibility.
Yeah, and that's what we're going to find out is that Lee and I will start taking trips around the state of Oklahoma and maybe up to Kansas and figuring out which SBR setups are going to work best for us and figure out what the pros and cons of the operations of those plants. So I've gotten, now I've gotten three or four different designers already working for us right now to allow us into those plants. Then we can get in there and start figuring out what's going to be best for us. So that may take a month or two, then we'll start bringing you guys back more information on the next step of wastewater treatment plan is actually the, the design and the engineering of it. So any questions on this step of the wastewater treatment plant? All right, next item I got on there is airport. I just wanted to update you guys a little bit. We've had conversations with the airport board, the city of Edmond, and ourselves. We discussed it. We started a quarterly meeting between the two communities, the two city managers and the manager of the airport. And out of those discussions and some discussions with their board, we got an entire list of a lot of the basic needs they want out there at the airport. And I wanted to just present those to you guys so you guys know exactly what we're going, what we want to look at improving our airport going forward. The great thing about airports is there's a lot of support on the federal and state level monetarily wise. So when we start looking at some of these things, some will be grants, some won't be grant. But there's a lot of things too that could just improve the quality of the airport that we have. And I say all of this because we were sitting right in the middle of the aerospace triangle of Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and Wichita. And that's one of the things that in the future I'll be bringing to you guys on our economic development plan is what we can do to tap into that. The airport in Grove was responsible over the last ten years for bringing in between 25 and 30 jobs annually, new jobs, to the community. And I want to start taking a look at different ways, infrastructure-wise, and different ways, atmosphere, and even some of the small things. Because I remember Mr. Stevens from Edmond being disheartened at one point in time because there was a discussion of a couple of hours over ice machine. They couldn't figure out, still couldn't figure out whether or not to buy an ice machine. So we kind of want to get away from those things and start thinking about some big picture items. And last week, Mr. Stevens, myself, and Shalom went down and talked to Vic Byrd, who's the director of the OAC. And at that point in time, I think it was a good discussion, eye-opening for them to let them know that the communities are working together and figuring out what we need to do together in order to go forward and make one of the better regional airports in this part of the state. It really is and should be our goal, is my goal and should be our goal, to make that the highest quality regional airport in north central Oklahoma. Because I think at the end of the day, there's going to be a lot of jobs and a lot of wealth that comes in and around that airport, especially knowing the amount of acres that we have that's on the east side that hasn't been developed yet. So with that being said, I'll let Shalom tell you guys a story of what Vic Byrd told his board. Because I have a couple of pictures in there in your guys' packet to your garden.
Yeah, I was kind of meet the commissioners, went to the Oklahoma Archeology Commission meeting that they have every couple of months, three months. And it was encouraging. We weren't even on the agenda, but about twenty-third item came up. And Vic Byrd said that he wanted to just say something about one of our pre-state's premier airport in the state. And then it was a Guthrie-Edmond Regional Airport. He was really impressed with the airport and that it had a lot of potential. He also said that telling his commissioners that he was very impressed and encouraged by the meeting that he had with both city managers. And he looked forward to the relationship that we were going to work out with. So they're highly encouraged with, that being said, I was really surprised that we'd be, you know, that Vic even brought it up. So that right there tells me that he's very interested. They're very interested in working with this and helping us out.
So one thing I want to put a bug in your guys' ears about is, because he put one in his board too, is that they have a program for airport terminal buildings. These airport terminal buildings, I've given you guys a copy of each one of them that they've done so far. Is they end up being about a million-dollar terminal building. And they're an excellent way to introduce people who are flying into your community to look at making investments into your community. I first had this discussion when I was in with the city of Bartlesville. And when people flew into their airport and they drove them into the community to look at their community center, they drove down one of the worst state highways in the state of Oklahoma. There's no trees, solid concrete, everything was torn up. You hit tons of potholes. You fly into a nice airport, go down through a road that's completely substandard to get back to your downtown, which you're very proud of. Well, people who are looking at, you know, building buildings and bringing in jobs, typically they fly in and don't necessarily drive in. But when we come in and we have a terminal building that could be used this, which was, I think it's a 50/50 match right now. But for us, it's even one-half of that because of the city-Edmond partnership that we have. They told us at that meeting that we could be placed on that program and maybe three years from now have that terminal building. But he also threw in the caveat too is that oftentimes, other communities like us may put in to be on that, that plan, and they end up dropping out. And I believe that probably within three years, we could have a building like that if you guys so desire. But I just wanted to give you guys a copy of what other communities have had with their terminal buildings and kind of put a little heads up of, you know, this is something maybe coming down the road in the next several years.
What generally is the, is the matching component on the, on the airport terminals?
Fifty/50, so 500,000. Then, of course, ours would be 250,000. So at the end of the day, you get, that's the great thing about airports is that, you know, typically they're five or 10%. And, but overall, but if you're going to get a million-dollar facility for $250,000, that's, that's one of those things that if we have the opportunity, we'll bring it back before you guys have that discussion on when, why, when, where, where should go.
And these improvement recommendations, the prioritization that's listed here, where did that come from?
Well, what it is, is that all the surveys that we did throughout the board, we handed them out to the board members and some of the tenants. So the way that we prioritize, they're just alphabetical as far as the ones. All the ones are just alphabetical. So then it has not been, it's been scrubbed down a little bit more since that list. So some of those items have already been taken care of, like the wifi upgrading, that, the pilot's lounge. But those priority is that the number ones are the most desired and then on down from the little bit of the population that we got.
So it came from the board and users?
Yes.
Those are the same thing?
Yes.
And then you, you grouped them based upon the scores that they got?
Well, yeah, several of them would request the same thing. So I, instead of putting I-tow or hash marks next to them, I just increased the number. If there was more, so number one would be six or more, five or more requests for that same item. So each time somebody hands one to me, there's still several out. When they hands, hands that to me, then I will go ahead and update that.
And as we go through our budgeting process for both communities, we'll continue to keep the conversations going to figure out what we can take into care of on each fiscal year's basis to see if we can start eliminating some of those needs out there. Next item, we're going to skip and come back to in a little bit. Discussion regarding RV parking. I've given you guys a resolution in there. Creating a fee for RV parking in Cottonwood Flats. We do have multiple RV pads out there that people can park on. And typically during events such as the Bluegrass Festival, that particular event will, will rent out the entire park and bring in and kind of do their own deal. But there's a lot of smaller events that doesn't, that don't rent out the entire park from us, but still have the need for RV parking, maybe the MS Bike Race and maybe some others like that. But anyway, there was a need a couple of months ago. We had an event in April where they desired to have some RV parking, but we didn't actually know what the cost was because typically we rented out them all the whole time. And then they just, we figured out what the bill was compared to the previous year's bill and billed them for whatever differences there were. But we've given you guys some information there about what some state-owned parks and their RV parking costs were. And they averaged up around a little $20 or so, so we put in our, our fee for $20. So we may be bringing that to you guys at the next council meeting, so.
Does that include water, sewer, and electricity? So you just combine that all together then?
Yeah.
And there's a different fee?
There's electrical outcomes in this.
There would be a different fee for those that are self-contained?
Yes. Well, actually, that's, we'll go back to what we've been traditionally been doing on that way. Later on, if that's something that doesn't seem to be working, we'll bring it back for you guys and see if we can figure out a different fee that way. But I did tell Tom Webb that anybody who comes out there and decides to put on an event that's going to take up the entire Cottonwood Flats, we'll continue to do what we did for past practice. It seems to be working out for everybody, for them to be able to actual cost. Next item, storm drainage. You guys have a copy of the designs, policies, and standards to what I call, not necessarily good fences make good neighbors, but good drainage engineering makes for good neighbors. Since my tenure began here, we've had at least two different instances where we've had developments, but the water runoff, stormwater runoff from those developments have affected their neighbors. And so in order to keep everybody neighborly, we want to take a look at making any impact from a development a zero-sum game. So whatever development, whatever there was before the development is the same impact off the development from that particular piece of property. What happens over the years when you don't have these policies and standards in place, enough stormwater will come off one piece of property onto another piece of property, then the city has to be involved. And somehow, some way, it becomes a public problem based upon those developments. So let you guys take a look and gander at those. They're pretty standard anymore through most communities. And there's a lot of different ways in which people can have a zero effect, whether or not they're making their parking lot part of their containment site or whether or not they're able to grab it and make it flow into a creek or a watershed that's already existing. So any questions on that particular item? All right. Next item on there, oil and natural gas ordinance. I'm going to give you guys an update on that. The very first thing I put in there is an attorney general opinion. Where based upon what the state statutes were changed with the Oklahoma Corporation Commission. To kind of put it in a nutshell, we can regulate things that are above ground, but not necessarily anything that goes below ground. That still is in the control of the Oklahoma Corporation Commission. So I went through probably fifteen different cities' regulations. And typically, those regulations were as old as our regulations. And they still went back and had regulations concerning things that were below ground. And really, the one that was in place that's most closely related to the attorney general's opinion is the city of Steelwaters. Now, I will, I've given you guys a copy of that for your review. I have had a meeting with the Oklahoma Independent Petroleum Producers, I think that's what it is, their association. They had several concerns with Steelwaters. So before I bring that before you guys, I'll have you guys a letter stating what their, their differences were. And a couple of them that I know off the top of my head right now is the setbacks. Steelwater wanted larger setbacks because some of their wells were closer to residential areas. So we'll have to take a look and see if that, that same issue is applied to Guthrie. Then secondly, the, the noise ordinance is they believe the decibels were a little bit too low. We've had that same conversation in this community regarding residential and commercial uses being back-to-back, even on the street here. If we do go the decibel level, that means that we're going to have to go out and have the equipment that, to be able to read decibels and make sure that it's the right equipment, which is a significant cost and having people trained to use that equipment also. So we may be looking at something that's more closer related to what our current noise ordinance are than maybe that. But again, we'll give you guys the pros and cons of both of those. But other than that, really Steelwater is the only one I know of that's probably completely and totally under and in line with the attorney general opinion. We'll need to go in and scrub ours up to make sure that some of those things that we have regarding actual what's going, what's in the well and what's happening in the well and all that kind of stuff needs to come out because we don't have the authority to, to control that at this point in time. So any questions on that? All right, capital improvement plan. This is the Ballford special here, just for you, for you to ask questions. I've given you guys the three pieces of information I had on the, what I'd given to you guys, pre-tax, just after, post-tax, and currently what our current is. And that, that sheet is still what we're utilizing, especially Kim and I, on where our money is going to be going out in regards to our capital improvement, sales tax funds. So all of those monies in there so far are still accurate to this date. And as we start getting information back from the money we borrowed for the engineering of the wastewater treatment plant and we start looking at building out our pool, we'll actually up those, update those things down to the dollar on what they are. And the good thing at this point in time is everything has been coming in under budget. So we're going to have more money to go out there and spend and more projects that we can take a look at. So anytime that you guys want a copy of that and ask me, I'll keep it updated on my computer. And then probably over the, what do we call the annual review planning session? The retreat. On the retreat, we'll go over that stuff in detail on exactly what the date and the time is on each one of those things. Because Steve and I have already discussed is that one of the things I want to start off with you guys is just starting on our basic budget. I haven't even put one together yet for you guys. So we can kind of go over theory and philosophy and some of the practices that I've done in the past, and that'll be one of those things. But anytime you guys need this sheet, let me know and we'll get it over to you. And, and we can kind of continue to plan from there.
I need it.
Next, I don't have any information for you. These are all hand notes and I didn't have Andrea type them out for me. But I want to put it in a nutshell is that there was a gentleman that came in and talked to us about the Heartland Flyer, where there would be a train for people to utilize from Oklahoma City to Guthrie during territorial Christmas. So if that's an idea that you guys want us to continue to look at, let me know. There will be a cost associated with that. Right now, I think it's somewhere around $10,000 to $15,000 initially. Then we'll go from there. But again, I want to make you guys aware of that conversation and we'll probably have to act on that relatively soon for them to even begin to look at bringing that up there.
Not going to happen. They've already pulled the funding.
Haven't?
Yep. It'll probably dead before session's over with what they're talking about.
There we go. I'll look for that and, and see where we come out and give you guys an update on that then too. All right, item number 10, dirt bike. There's currently not a use for essentially dirt bike racetrack, for lack of a better term, in our table of our zoning. So I know that you guys are probably all aware of that. PNZ did not pass for it to be a use in any of our zoning codes. Therefore, anybody wanting to have a facility like that would not be able to at this point in time. So.
Who's PNZ?
Planning, zoning.
Okay.
So anybody that would ask that would not be able to do that. So the next step would be to bring it before council. And if I have two of you, raise your hands, we'll bring that up for you guys at a council meeting. Because it's still going to take one to make a motion, another one to second. All right. We'll have that before you guys in June then and bring it to you guys so you guys can take a review and have a discussion and have a vote on it. So. Next, I've given you guys a copy of Neighborhood Solutions contract, proposed contract. I've had meetings with Sue and a portion of the board. I have all the board that day at Warner.
At where?
At the Warner warehouse.
Oh, no, it wasn't the entire board.
Okay. So I've had discussions with Sue and a portion of the board of the Neighborhood Solutions. We have a warehouse on, what street is that? 19th and Warner?
19th.
Yeah, at 19th and Warner. And it really is an old clinic that has essentially three rooms that people used to be seen in, has a reception area and a little, has the bathroom already that's ADA-approved and a couple of small little areas that they could possibly put in some filing cabinets and stuff.
Is that for Neighborhood Solutions to go into?
Possibly. And that's what I was going to let you guys know. And during those discussions, we were looking for a facility for them to go into. Sue had given me a list of requirements that they would like to see. So when I went out there and one day to, to review the facility, the idea came to my mind that that may be a good place for them to go. Currently, the simple, I've just purchased the old dental facility right across the street from it. And it kind of even became more, maybe even more clear to me that. street from it and it kind of even became more, maybe even more clear to me that maybe we can have a conversation with Neighborhood Solutions to go out there to that facility. Right now, what the way this contract is they'd be able to take over the facility, have next to nothing and a lease, and we'll give them $5,000 a year to go out there and pay for their operations of the facility. And then we'll have to go through and figure out what furnitures, fixtures and other assets we may have out there that they can utilize to make their office available. Then also probably take a look at moving their storage from where it's currently located at the Armory and maybe getting them a facility out there directly behind the office. So when clientele come out there, they can go directly out back and have them select the items for their housing. So, so yes, to answer your question, we may be looking at that as a facility for Neighborhood Solutions. So any questions?
So did we, did we provide a budget for them when they were located here of the $5,000? Where'd the $5,000 come from?
The $5,000 comes from the actual cost of, one, the utilities of the facility out there. And number two is kind of what we've been paying for without a contract for them to be housed out of City Hall at this current time. So between those two costs and a little buffer, that's where I came up with the $5,000.
What's pushing them to go out there? Is it us or are they wanting to go out there?
I think, I think that for two reasons in my mind. One is that an independent operation, I think for Sue and them would be great and not necessarily having to depend on us to have the doors open and people up front to come in through behind closed doors. And secondly, is that it's kind of a nice facility out there that's being underutilized right now to house essentially cleaning materials. So if we can make another asset out there, especially, you know, on that side of town with some other, you know, great things that are happening between the road infrastructure and heck, we've got a lot of building permits that are going in on out there on that side of town too. I think that'd be a great place. Already has a parking lot there, already everything kind of set up and ready to go. Any other questions? Little Britches, as you guys know, they have an event coming up around the week of the July 4th and we're kind of in discussions on what they're additionally needing out there. And really there are two needs I want you guys to make aware of is, one, is if you guys know of anybody or any organization that's needing, that wants to volunteer, they're always needing some volunteers out there. And secondly, we're going to be in discussions between ourselves, Edmund and Logan County Sheriff's Office regarding what needs to take place to get people in and out of there safely, especially on the night that everyone's going to be bringing their RVs and their trailers and their horses and everything else in. So if something comes up over the next few weeks, I'll keep you guys updated, but don't be surprised if I have to bring you guys something as some type of economic development, incentive agreement, safety agreement, something in that factor, just to see if we can't continue to have that event out there on a year to year basis.
And then this would be an agreement with Little Britches or with?
I haven't figured that out yet. It may be Lazy E, Little Britches, the City of Edmund, CVBs galore. I don't know yet. So once I figure out all the details, I'll bring it back to you guys. But those are the two general issues I want to make sure that everyone's aware of is that we're always in need of volunteers for that particular organization. And in order to make it the best event it can be, especially this first year, because a lot of these people have been going out to the state of Colorado for this event for years and years. If we're not making it as convenient and easily accessible as possible, it may be one of those things where people rise up and want to take it back out of the community. So we want to make sure that we make it the best event possible so we continue to have this event year after year. All right. Item number 13, Banner School. We had an agreement for Mr. Ladd and his wife to turn the property over to the community. At that point in time, the city would go out and demolish the property. As of last week, they have filed for bankruptcy and we don't know where that piece of property will land regarding where the trustee wants to do and the creditors, negotiation and all that kind of stuff. So at this point in time, we don't have the ability to go out there and clean up that facility based upon what had taken place last week with Mr. Ladd and his wife. So. Randall, you want to add anything?
Come over here.
Yeah, good.
His lawyer tells me they still want to do the deal with the city, but the bankruptcy obviously complicates it. The trustee will have to disclaim or abandon that property and then there's a mortgage on it that may be released. I don't think that'll be a problem.
I thought there wasn't no mortgage on it.
Pardon?
Oh, yeah, there was.
Yeah. I've not received a title report, but I'm told there is a cross collateralized mortgage on the building. And I'm assuming there is, but I'm also assuming the bank doesn't want to assume the cleanup obligation. So I'm guessing they'll release the mortgage if the trustee abandons it and we can go ahead and do our deal then. But when you get a bankruptcy involved, it delays everything. I mean, it stops me. I'm set in court Friday and can't go to court because of bankruptcy.
So I want to give you guys an update on that particular property. And finally, giving you guys copies of a picture of.
Whitewater.
You got it. Of a place called Tiffany Springs Park in Kansas City. And I kind of give you guys a little background on this. Steve and I have had this discussion several times, so I want you guys to make sure that you hear me when I state this, is that this is our goal. This is not going to be our facility. So if it changes or it moves or it gets readdressed in some way, shape or form, don't get mad at me. I oftentimes like to bring you guys finished products and things that are ready to go. But my original thought was for us not to ever utilize our existing pool that we have in place. I don't like digging something out and putting something back in the same hole. To me, those things don't end up being structurally sound for the long term, especially when you're putting water in, taking water out. And Oklahoma clay that we have around here that we live on, that likes to move with earthquakes in each one of the four seasons. So I started talking to a group that, many groups, but this particular group had actually gone and visited this site. And once I looked at it, it actually made a little bit of sense to me. If we utilize our existing point for lap swimming over there, we'll have to go through and probably redo a lot of parts of that pool in order to make it viable for lap swimming and diving boards. But if we can save a significant amount of money by utilizing that pool as lap swimming, then we'll just make all the fun stuff off to the side. That way we can have a zero entry play structures and different types of slides in a different area. And if we can save enough on not having to do the lap swimming pool, then we'll take a look at doing some of those really fun stuff like a lazy river or a whirlpool area and stuff like that. But I want you guys to review that. If you guys have any issues with it, let me know.
So you think they can take our existing pool and make it a lap pool?
Yes. Yeah. And it's actually well equipped to be that. It has a shallow end and a deep end just for that. And the issue though, one issue I was going to have with developing our particular quad center was that in order to save money and grow, I had to put the different slides into the deep end of the pool, but it was also the lap swimming portion. And when I went back and revisited them, they said that was one of the issues, that one of the complaints they had is that the recreational portion was having issues with the people who were doing there more for physical activity. The people there for the lap swimming, they didn't want to be crushed by the kids coming out of the, out of that. So if we can actually separate those things and utilize what we have existing, and I went down there and looked at our existing facility, you guys actually have great guts to the pool. You guys have replaced everything, all the filter and everything and a lot of the piping on, or that'd be the east end of the pool, just a few years ago. So if we can go in there and continue to probably do a little bit more pipe work and take a look at how we're gathering the water out of the pool and back in there instead of the 1940 design that doesn't allow us to have diving boards right now, then we may go in there and do that. Plus, I want to maybe look at doing some resurfacing along the top and making more areas, more family friendly areas, then find out a way to keep from having that pool leak. Since it's so old and made of concrete, you guys have some gaps in there where the concrete is pulled back over the last 60 years, probably about three or four good inches. So I want to see if there can't, if there's not a reservice that we can do to make that a little bit more watertight in there.
Would you put the stuff over on the south side or on the north side?
I originally wanted to put it on the south side, but the more I look at it, the north side looked like it's going to be better equipped for this because at that point in time, all we'll be losing is a shelter, a few trees, and we'll probably have to relocate the basketball court, but that basketball court needs to be relocated anyway. I'm not a big fan of asphalt basketball courts. So I kind of like the concrete. So, yeah, so that's kind of the thought process right now. Like I said, don't hold me to it. Some point in time in the future, it may change, but that's kind of the concept of it right now. Go out there, send it out to the community, let me know what their feedback is. And again, just like we'll be going around taking a look at wastewater treatment plants, we're going to be going around taking a look at these pools too and making sure there's not even a better idea out there that may pop up for us. And then again, we'll be bringing back for you guys something to look at for a contract for the design of that facility. So, all right. That's all I have except for item number four and.
I'd like to have another, I'd like to push that to another workshop.
Okay.
I think that's going to take a lot longer than 12 minutes.
Oh, no problem. No problem. The, the boards, commissions, committees, we've given you guys a synopsis of those items about how many members there are, how they're appointed and kind of what their meetings are and when they were established and how they were established. And we've given you guys that information on the ordinances, resolutions that established all those things. So with that being said, if you weren't happy to hear what else you guys would like to have a discussion on those boards and commissions. So hopefully I left you enough time for that.
No, I don't think we do.
Okay.
Do you? I think we need to push it. I think that needs to be an entire workshop on its own right.
Yeah, you can, you could probably talk about it a long time, but you know, I think my concern about the whole thing is the resident requirement that needs to be in there for all of them. I think when someone is making a decision for the city of Guthrie, they should be a citizen of our, of our city. They should be voters in our city. They should not be someone outside.
There are two boards that require that.
Most of them do.
That require it be a citizen.
Most of them do.
I agree completely.
I mean, you don't own property in San Francisco and expect to be put on a board that makes decisions about it, about how your property is going to be run there and why should Guthrie be any different than that? And you know, when, when I go to the Middle East, when I used to go, I didn't expect to see women in bikinis and people drinking beer and things like that out in the public. That's the way they did things over there and I didn't expect they would take my input that that's the way it should be. I'm not a citizen over there. And I think people that come to be a citizen of Guthrie should be the ones that make decisions. Otherwise, if they have an expertise that we need to capture, they could be ex officio and we could listen to them, but they should not have a vote in how we do things.
I agree completely.
Well, you also have people, and I hear what you're saying, but you also have people that are investing pretty seriously in this community financially, whether it'll be buildings or business, businesses that just happen to live on what I'll call a fringe, or in the case that what we're talking about here, without going into detail on it, a lot closer to downtown Guthrie than I live, a lot closer. It's just as a matter of, you know, it hasn't been sucked into city limits yet and it will be in that particular area. So I mean, you know, if we're, yeah, if you're talking about someone coming from Moore and being on one of the boards and they have no skin in the game, I agree. But if you're talking about someone that has hard assets in town, multiple hard assets in town, business in town and contributing to the town, I don't agree.
Well, I think that someone in town takes precedence over them every time. I don't care. If they live here in town and they're voting citizen, they take precedence and we shouldn't give favoritism to them because they own more buildings.
I don't think you give them favoritism. They just, they disqualify for that position.
Someone else is more qualified.
Even though they're not a citizen.
The qualification on this particular opening is a building owner. And that person, my understanding, the other person is not a building owner. And so they don't meet the qualification.
I think the point is that we need to change it and show that it is a resident, a voting resident.
Yeah. Well, where I'm going with this is that the current doesn't have it as a resident. It has it as a building owner.
But that's what we're talking about.
No, I understand.
Changing it.
I understand. The historic, but let's look at the HP in its own right, okay? And Ed, you're a lot more qualified to discuss this. You were the board of it. I mean, you were the head of it, so why don't you just take over?
Well, it's true. And I think that, I think people who own buildings in Guthrie, especially the antique buildings and in the Capitol Historic District, they have perfect right to be on that board.
Donald Trump owns a building here. You're going to let him come in here and, and vote on how we do things?
In the Capitol Historic District, if he owns property, he has skin in the game? Sure.
Well, they're going to be drinking beer and wearing bikinis.
Yeah.
On his resort over in, in the Middle East.
That's not the point. If he comes in, these people that are living on the fringe area of Guthrie, I bet it's a Guthrie address. It's probably still a Guthrie zip code, just not inside the voting lines.
They're not the voters in the city of Guthrie. They don't belong to Ward 1, 2 or 3. They're not, they're not citizens of Guthrie.
But they own property in Guthrie.
They have. That's what we're talking about. The historic district is minute compared to the size of Guthrie.
Do you really think they're going to put you on a board in Edmund even if you live in Guthrie? Put you on a board in Edmund to let them to make decisions about their ordinances and about what signs you can put up and what things like that?
Actually, they may in the historic district. You know, and you might, you might not want to open that one because I'm pretty sure that they do.
But I would never have him.
Really? And their, their historic district is.
We don't have a historic district in that.
There you go. They don't have one. Okay? And our historic.
Totally different animal.
Our historic district is minute.
Any commission, anything, you can't expect to be put on some other place where you don't live's boards to make decisions there. You just can't. You should live where you're, where you're making decisions. And I don't want someone from Edmund coming in here and making decisions for the people of Guthrie. I don't, I don't care where they live. If they don't live in Guthrie, they shouldn't be on our boards that make decisions.
And the historic preservation is different than any other board.
They make decisions.
Wait, didn't we already? Didn't we?
It's an advisory commission to this council.
Join this board in some degree.
No, that's what it is. Is I mean, they can allow signs of votes to go through.
You voted for an Edmund applicant to be on this board.
What's that?
You voted for an Edmund applicant to be on this board.
I wasn't aware of it.
Well, that's what the application clearly said. Okay? And you voted for it.
It was the, the.
So you're saying that you've never voted for it, but yet you did.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying I wouldn't, I shouldn't have. I'm saying that.
Then why did you?
Because I missed it.
How do you miss that?
I thought they lived in Cedar Valley.
Yeah, I thought they lived in Cedar Valley. And I hadn't really given it a lot of thought. And I've given it a lot of thought. And I don't believe someone should be on one of our commissions who doesn't live here.
But Cedar Valley's not in the city limits either.
I know.
But wouldn't you think that someone is more.
We're talking about something in the past. I'm talking about where we need to go in the future.
Wouldn't you think someone is more deserving to be on that board that has skin in the historical district?
Do you think someone who has skin has more skin than someone who lives here?
I'm talking about one that doesn't versus one that does and one that has buildings within the historical district versus one that doesn't.
I think people have an interest.
You voted for one that doesn't, that doesn't live here.
Who did I vote for?
The same guy in Patrick Herd, the architect.
I don't remember even voting for him. I don't even remember that. Honestly.
Well, we can pull that up.
I don't remember it. It was brought up last time that we voted for it. I honestly don't remember doing it.
It's the special requirement that orders.
It's the other exception.
It's the other, other exception. You have to have building owner too.
There was special knowledge, which was architecture. Special knowledge that the, the way our ordinance, our, that commission is settled, set up right now, it excluded the citizen residency issue.
The special knowledge, I just said, I would handle.
Wouldn't that be ex officio?
If you want someone that's got special knowledge, we need to have special knowledge, but they shouldn't have a vote. We need to listen to them. They should be ex officio. They should be someone that is advisor.
Well, if you're going to go there, let me, let me say something. If you're going to go there, then you need to, then you need to make all facets of this city be within the city limits. Whoever's running and working in this city should be in the city limits. Randall doesn't live in the city limits. Randall doesn't live in the city limits. He's our attorney.
That's right.
He's in Edmund.
He doesn't vote on Edmund.
But he's in Edmund and he makes critical decisions for us.
No, he does not make any decisions. He advises us.
Yeah, he does.
He does not make a single decision. Randall, do you make any decisions?
Well, he gives a lot of, he may not make decisions, okay, but he gives a lot of a serious amount of input.
That's right, and I say that's good. I just said that's good and that's fine. We should have those people when we need them. He's a perfect example of what I'm talking about. We need to have some people from outside advising us with special knowledge and expertise. Yes, you need those people, but they should not be voting and he doesn't vote. It's a perfect example. Thank you.
I think if, I think in the particular example that we're using with the architect providing special knowledge to the Historical Preservation Commission. I think number one, people are, obviously have to be interested to make an application. So that says one thing. I think if you say, yeah, you can, you can be involved, but you cannot vote, that sends a message too. And I think it's a message that is not positive. And you're gonna, you know, why should people with, with special knowledges, the case we're talking about. Spend their time and energies if they're not accepted as a full partner in this, in this relationship with the historic, the city, and the particular commission. I think, I think we're blowing this way out of proportion, but.
I do too, because the bottom line is, if, if.
I don't know what the problem is now.
If the existing applicant, and you know this, if the existing applicants, okay, one of the existing applicant wasn't who they were. This would never be here right now. And I've been pushing to sit and you're right, okay, through our conversations, I've been here a year. And I've been pushing, not hard, but I will from this point forward, to sit and go through all of our commissions, every single one of them. Okay, and sit down and get right down to the nuts and bolts on them. Nobody's wanted to do that. We haven't done it. Till Carol put her name in the hat to be on HP. Okay, and now here we are.
I'm not trying to make this personal.
But it is.
But it's not. I don't care how you feel. It's the logic of it. It does not make sense that we should bring someone inside to tell us how we're gonna run our city.
But your past voting doesn't, doesn't prove that, see?
Just because they're a voting.
Okay.
We're talking about an architect.
We're talking about a building owner. The other one's not.
The building owner is from outside. We got other building owners that we could appoint.
But they're not, they haven't applied. We had, we had the two applicants. One didn't qualify, one did, based on how the HP is set up and devised. Okay, and now here we are because that one is Carol.
Like I said, I'm not making it personal. I don't care how you feel. I'm talking about using your head and thinking the logic and you've lost it when you consider what you feel is.
I think rather than, you know, make personal accusations here. I think that, are we, are we saying that a landowner does not have particular, in this particular case.
They have no vote in this town.
Have no, excuse me, have no interest in the rules, requirements and so forth of the Historical District. When they own land, it would seem to me.
They may not vote with nature.
That they may, that they actually may have more interest, involvement in that particular arena of decision-making, of recommendation-making. Than somebody who lives in, on Lake Guthrie.
When you buy property.
Just excuse me. Than somebody who lives in Lake Guthrie and, and doesn't have a, as much an investment in that particular focus. Historical preservation, in that particular geographic area, the Historic District, as somebody that owns land in those, in that area. I think that that person would be very much involved and very much interested and has, as the notice has been said here.
But when you buy property.
It's skin in the game.
For a long time, and I've been trying to get this in. When you buy property, if you bought property in San Francisco, you buy property and you know you're gonna live by their rules. If you own that property there, you cannot expect to come in and change the rules in San Francisco if you live in Los Angeles or here. You can't expect that. So when you have property in this town, you've bought into our rules and the way we do things.
And that's our, that is the rules. The rules are what they are. You're trying to change the rules today.
If you put someone else from outside, they're gonna change the rules.
But that's how our rules are the rules today. You're trying to change the rules.
That's right, aren't you?
We're not sitting here trying to change the rules. You're trying to change the rules. Is how that's working. I mean, don't you see that? I mean, I agree with a lot of your philosophy here, but your, your, your method of delivery on it is way off. Because you're trying to change the rules on something that hasn't been changed, has been set up this exact way since the beginning.
And how many people have we put from the outside on there?
You've put one that I know of, okay? Sorry, you have. I don't know how many have been from the outside, see?
We're gonna, we're gonna call this in sixty seconds because we've got to get downstairs and get prepared. So you've got sixty seconds to have any more comments. Anybody else on the council would like to have any particular comments on this issue?
Don't quote Hattie Coleman, "Go win, community wins."